... meeting of the Lynchburg City School Board meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First item of business, we need to amend the agenda. I need a motion to add an addendum to item D2 Personnel Report and to replace the attachment for item H1 Special Education Advisory Committee for 2017-18. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
I need to amend the agenda a second.
Second discussion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. First up is public comments. We do have public comments this evening. Before I call the people up, I need to read the policy here. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to his or her duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit his comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of his or her presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is thirty minutes. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. First is Mr. Ronald Shavers. You could approach the podium, please.
Good afternoon, Lynchburg City School Board, Dr. Massey, everybody. Well, coming to speak this evening on bullying. I run an after-school program over James Cross and calls it Kings and Queens After-School Program. And we work with a lot of kids who go to IS Prey, Heritage Elementary, and different schools, everything from K through 12. One of the things we have noticed inside of working with these kids is a extreme, some type of misdisco between the students and these particular kids, right? We've had cases where some of the kids who have went to the school had discussions or interactions with certain teachers. The interactions have led to these kids subsequently being suspended, referred, or to the point where now they don't even go to the class. Meaning that when they went to talk to the teachers to figure out the best solution for the way, the teachers basically did not get them an opportunity to hear them out or understand where they was coming from, which subsequently lead to the kids taking time out to, instead of going to certain classes, they telling, "Mr. BB, why should I go to this class when if I go and talk to the teachers, nobody's going to be there for me? Every time I go to the teachers, she even want to talk to a couple of counselors." And certain situations at Heritage where once the students, even the counselors talked with the kids, the kid ended up, once again, becoming suspended. I know I'm going to different places, I want to get to another part. Bullying also over EC Glass. One of the things we learned over EC Glass during this thing, because we work with kids throughout the city, was a couple of weeks back, we had a situation where parents called where apparently a couple of kids inside the schools was threatened. Don't know all the details to it, but the kids was threatening and saying that they would be killed, right? One of the students, parents came to me and they end up talking to the students where one of the young ladies, which I think she's junior or sophomore, had someone tell her that, "I will cut your throat, you black B.I.T.C.H." I spoke about this at the city council meeting, never heard anything, which they told me at the city council meeting to come speak to Lynchburg City School Board. These are some of the things that still taking place inside our schools. I talked to a fifth grader over Lincoln Elementary, fifth graders. I asked them, "Hey, how is it doing? It's one Friday, beautiful morning, Lynchburg, Virginia. How are you guys doing? Do you like school?" "No." "Hold up, it's Friday, it's beautiful Lynchburg, why don't you like schools?" So this one young lady said she was in the third grade. She said, "Well, I don't learn nothing." "What do you mean you don't learn nothing?" She said, "They don't teach us nothing. I just sit in class and everything. They tell me I complain." Then she says something very important, that they help the other kids. So I asked the fifth grader, "Why you don't like school?" And you know what she said? "I don't know these kids from a candidate." And she said, "Well, I don't like school because I don't like how, when, if we do something, the teachers teach us one way, and if they do something..." "What do you mean if we are they?" "Well, if the black kids does this, we get treated like this, and when the white kids done, we don't get the same treatment." These are fifth graders and third graders that noticing some of the things that were taking place in our city for years. So I bring this to you guys this evening, hoping that we can come with some type of positive solutions and further conversations where we can interject some type of diversity training. I know y'all might have it once per year, but maybe we can do that every quarterly. And I will leave you on this. I know they just had intercessions where the kids was out for a week. Is any way possible doing these intercessions, or you can create some type of intercessions where our Lynchburg City School teachers go through some type of diversity training once per semester, per quarter? Because with all the things that's going on in our country, the social, what I'm seeing from the kids, not from myself, but from the kids, what I'm seeing is the history that was taught back in seventeen and eighteen hundreds is not what's going on today. We need to have something in place where the teachers can interact with these kids with these social issues that's causing diversion. I hope there's a school board we can help be a solution to these kids in the better our city. Thank you.
Next is Robert Flood.
Thank y'all for letting me speak on this topic that I've been talking about for the last three, four years, why ex-offenders can't volunteer. And I know we had came up with a vote, maybe a couple of months ago, and the vote was like eight to one. And later on, I was told that there's a showing situation now where we are at a standstill. I haven't got no information about why we at a standstill. I haven't got no information about why y'all haven't made a decision. I know y'all wanted to do it fifteen years and decided to do it five years. If a person come home being incarcerated, he could volunteer under the five year. I still wanted it zero, because to me, that mean that person been punished twice after he done done whatever his crime was, came home and trying to do something positive. Now, this insurance thing, I know that we all start talking about this in 2014. Now, that was November 2014 when I brought this up to the school board and to a couple of meetings. And it's been addressed off and on through the school board meetings, and one new insurance talked about. All of a sudden, there's an insurance situation after three years? I don't understand that. It's something that I feel like we can work on, we can work together to try to mend it, because the majority of y'all wanted to see ex-offenders that don't have no violent crimes to volunteer. But all of a sudden now, somebody found some kind of loophole, or somebody said, "Well, let's take this to the school board and make it an insurance, excuse me, situation." We need to talk, I mean, this community need to come together. And, you know, it's just, when we come to talk about these kids and some of these parents that can't go to a field trip just recently, parent was not, was told not to go to see their kids at a Halloween event. They was turned down because they had a felony. Only two hours they wanted to spend with their kids, and all of a sudden, they can't go. We've been talking about, just like I said, going on three or four years, and y'all came to a vote, eight to one. Let's try to do something. I guess based what y'all talked about, now all of a sudden, there's an insurance issue? Seemed like that would have came up at the beginning. Why it take three years to come for, an insurance issue to come up when y'all could have said that from the start? So we could try to mend it a different way. All of us want to work together. Everybody I know want to see things positive. And there's so much negative going on, not only in this country, in this city. We're a small town, compared to these big cities. And why can't we get some ex-offenders that know what's going on to go volunteer to help these kids out? Because sometimes them kids ought to be the ones they turn to. They have the solution of some of the problems that it seem like ain't been solved. Somebody need to talk to them, and they can be reached by a lot of people that have been through things in their life. Ain't nobody perfect. But sometime, people go through things that can relate to other kids, especially ones that need help. And you know we need a lot of help in these different situation with kids. When you can't talk to them at the school, you can't share your story with them, I mean, what can you do? I mean, what's the purpose of it? Just to go talk to a kid for one hour, two hours, and you voted on it eight to one, and all of a sudden, insurance situation, Scott's Insurance? I mean, come on. I mean, you know, all of us, like I said one time before, if your kid had an accident, never been in trouble in his life, accident, had a DUI, never had nothing, a driving record, or nothing, get locked up, come home, he got a family, he want to go to that field trip with his kids. This your kid now. And all of a sudden, they tell him, "You got a felony. You can't go." That's the same way other parents look at their kids when they come home. They want to at least get with their kids and have fun. They stay with them twenty-four seven, if they live with them. So why can't they volunteer? Let's at least try to think about what kind of solution we can come up to mend this a different way. And I appreciate your time. I appreciate y'all listening, because some people are hearing what I'm saying. You know, this ain't going nowhere. And if we can't work together, y'all see what's going on out here in this world. This is a small town. That's a city, Chicago, New York. We don't want to see that happen here. Thank you for your time, and please think about what I'm saying. Thank you.
Next is Wendy Yates.
Wendy Yates, and I'm representing a group of veteran teachers. Good evening. I'm here to represent a group of veteran teachers that addressed you back in the spring regarding teacher salaries. We have been keeping an eye on the progress, but have not heard any feedback as we requested. So we want to bring some things to your attention, once again, as you deliberate and make decisions about what our future salaries will look like. We would like to request that you continue to consider our plea that salaries need to be addressed with the veteran teachers first, steps twenty-three to thirty-one, and secondly, with the seasoned teachers, steps twelve to twenty-two. In past presentations, we gave you information comparing today's salaries with that of ten years ago, a decade. As we once again did not receive raises this year, the disparity in salaries became worse. With the veteran teachers, that's again, steps twenty-three to thirty-one, still making ten percent less than a decade ago. That's five thousand dollars less than ten years ago. Also, seasoned teachers, steps eleven to twenty-two, are now making about one percent less. And you can see these numbers on the salary comparison chart that was given to you earlier, the one that's vertical. Please note that steps thirty-two and up, the retiring teachers, continue to increase. We are happy for them, but this has created an inequity in the pay scale. Every teacher currently in steps thirty-two and above are making three to ten thousand more per year than anyone at that step ten years ago. Let me reiterate by giving you some specific differences from a decade ago. A teacher who is at step fifteen was making forty-four thousand dollars and is now making forty-three thousand, little less. Step twenty was making forty-eight thousand and is now at forty-seven thousand. Step twenty-five was making fifty-seven thousand and is now at fifty-one thousand, significantly lower. Step thirty was making sixty-one thousand and is now making fifty-six thousand, lower once again. But note that at step thirty-five, those making sixty-one thousand ten years ago are now making sixty-six thousand, significantly higher. It has become harder to attract and retain teachers to LCS, and a lack of promise in the pay scale makes it even more difficult. Now turn your attention to the second chart provided for you, called the Big Jump, horizontally. LCS has a big jump in salary of about six thousand dollars. You can see it in the shaded region on the chart. In two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that big jump moved back to year twenty-three. Those of us who looked forward to that big jump, were even more excited that we would reach that reward right when our children were about to attend college. Then in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, salaries froze for five years. So in year two thousand eight, I personally was four years away from that big jump. Now, nearly ten years later, as the scale continues to slide down, I am still four years away from that jump, yet my children are nearing the end of their college stay. If the scale keeps sliding, or only given a two percent increase, we will never reach the retirement salary from ten years ago. The gap keeps widening, and we can never catch up. We also want to point out that because those in years twenty-three to thirty-one have never reached the big jump, there are recurring decreases each year. This is not just a one-time decrease of six thousand, but a continued miss of six thousand every year. You can see this in the box on the right side of the Big Jump chart. For example, a person at step twenty-three would have just missed the jump this year for a total of six thousand dollars lost. I have missed this for six years now and am out thirty-six thousand dollars. Those at step thirty-one have missed the jump nine times and are out fifty-four thousand dollars. This is very discouraging for veteran teachers, and it is money we will never get back. One final observation. Notice a teacher at step twenty-seven was at the top of the scale in two thousand five, the very beginning of the chart, making fifty-six thousand, two hundred sixty dollars. That was thirteen years ago. Today, a teacher of twenty-nine years is not even making that much. They're at fifty-five thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars and are far from the top of the scale, which is currently seventy-one thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars, step thirty-eight. How is it that a teacher of twenty-nine years was at the top of the scale a decade ago, but today, we are still more than sixteen thousand dollars away from the top? But take note, we are also only sixteen thousand dollars above the brand-new teacher. So a step twenty-nine-year teacher is in the middle of our pay scale. We will never, or will we ever, reach retirement. In conclusion, we are pleading with you to address these discrepancies in our salaries by starting with the veteran and seasoned teachers. We would like to know, we would like our voices heard. We are aware you are working on it. We would still like feedback and would love to be a part of it. Thank you very much for hearing our concerns.
Next is Catherine Phillips.
Hi. My name's Kat Phillips, and I'm speaking for the Lynchburg Education Association's EC Glass delegation, many of whom are here with us tonight. In eighteen fifty-nine, Charles Darwin introduced the theory of natural selection to the world. With it, he proved that for an organism to survive, it must adapt to the demands of the environment. For years, teachers in the Lynchburg City School System have been making these changes, from improvements in the technology, to collaborative professional learning communities, to common assessments and grading practices. I would wager that a teacher or principal who retired in two thousand and eight would scarcely recognize the school that they so long worked in today. And I don't mean to suggest that these changes are bad. Education is changing in this country, and we should be responsive to the needs of the community around us. This barrage of changes, and make no mistake that the pace of these changes has come, has been relentless. This barrage of changes has not come with consideration of teacher or staff compensation. Wages for employees in this division have basically been unchanged for almost a decade. And while we do appreciate the board's attempts to make compensation adjustments in specific places, new hires, coaches, and some others that fit specific labels, the fact remains that the step scale that once was the pillar of educator value in this community remains unconsidered. So tonight, I stand here asking you, with the collective voices of EC Glass behind me, to put all your political will into finding a way to reintroduce the step scale for Lynchburg City School employees. Last month, a representative from the search firm tasked with collecting applicants for our open superintendent position was quoted as saying, "We need a pay and to pay a superior salary to attract the best candidates." Dear friends, does this not apply to our teachers, and our aides, and our bus drivers, and custodians also? Do you want the best people in your classrooms? If so, then what are we worth to you? If a new superintendent is worth paying top dollar asking price, then what about the special education teacher at Bass? What about the bus driver for TC Miller, or the librarian at Dunbar Middle? Do you have the will right now, today, to make that step scale a reality? The L.A.A. has previously provided Dr. Massey and the board with examples of appropriate step scales for consideration. Before he left, Dr. Braybrand crooned that employee compensation was the issue for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. We're here to ask you, was he right? Change isn't easy. Darwin understood this. But if we want the very best for our kids, we have to give the best to the professionals that serve them. Thank you for your time.
Next is, we move to a special presentation, item B1, the Governor's Award for Excellence and Innovation in Education. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask Mrs. Karen S. Nelson to come to the podium, please. And I would like to ask the chairman and the vice chair to please join her at the podium.
You know I do it all the time. It's unfair.
On October twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, Mrs. Karen S. Nelson, Principal Perrymont Elementary School, was presented with the Governor's Award for Excellence and Innovation in Education in the area of closing the achievement gap. There were thirteen recipients out of more than one hundred twenty nominations who received awards in five categories. Those categories were closing the achievement gaps, community partnerships, innovation in education, and preparing students for the new Virginia economy, and supporting school readiness. Ms. Nelson received her award in closing the achievement gap. In recognition of this, our chairman will now present her with a plaque as signifying this honor.
So the plaque says, "A Tradition of Excellence for All Lynchburg City Schools, Presented to Karen S. Nelson in recognition of the Governor's Award for Innovation and Excellence in Education in the category of Closing the Achievement Gap by the Lynchburg City School Board, November seventh, two thousand seventeen." Congratulations.
It's good to be having you, having you come up here. Vice Chair will now present Mrs. Nelson with a picture of Mrs. Nelson and the governor and her staff.
This beautifully framed picture with the governor, yourself, and others will be a lasting memory of an incredible accomplishment.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You know I can't leave without saying something, so... We had a, at Dr. Massey's request, we had an assembly and a press conference at the school. And one of the things that I talked about was that I am a product of Lynchburg City Schools, just as the students are, and that's because of the opportunities that I've been given during my career. And this is an example of another opportunity that we were given. And we are so grateful to Dr. Massey because he made us aware of this opportunity, and he didn't predetermine who was worthy to apply for these awards. And so we were left to take this task on for ourselves. And there were several categories, and one of the challenges was that we couldn't pre, that we could not self-nominate. And so I looked to our partners at first, and that appeared that it wasn't going to work out. And I went out on medical leave, and unbeknownst to me, while I was gone, the leadership team took on this challenge and submitted the nomination. And I'm uncomfortable that it's in my name, because it's the work of so many people over so much time. And it really is a tribute to the work of the staff and the students. But if my name being on this brings attention to our school and lets people see what I see and see what I know, then I'm very grateful and very honored to be in this position. So I, you know, I wish people could have been with me tonight. They're back doing parent-teacher conferences this evening. So that's why it's a little bit unusual for me to be alone, but thank you so much for the recognition. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity, because while, yes, it is about money, it's not all about money. It's about building the capacity of your people so that they can do the work that needs to be done. And if I'm anything, I'm evidence of that. So thank you so much. And Dr. Massey, you had asked me to bring it, so I did. Did you want me to show them?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And I'm embarrassed it's wrapped in a paper towel, but that was all I could find this morning, so, before I left. And this is the award that was given to us by the governor, and Dr. Massey had asked me to bring it, and so I did. Thank you.
I think we all recognize that it's a real team effort at Perrymont, and please pass along our congratulations to your staff. Yeah, thank you. Okay, we move next to the finance report. Mr. Beckles?
Good evening. I have before you the financial report for the three months ended September thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. My report will contain three components. One will be the financial report, two is an update on school nutrition, and three, an update on Alio. As far as our financial report is concerned, again, I'll make no comment on our revenues. Our revenues are still as they were originally budgeted. We wouldn't get an update until the ending part of December, so there's no need, there's no change at this point that I need to bring to your attention. On the expense side of things, you will see some negative numbers in some of the account balances, and that is because we have not closed out from seventeen, as you know, audit has just been completed. So we haven't rolled over the audited numbers yet. So you will see some negative numbers, but I'm not concerned about those. Soon as we roll over the year-end numbers, those negative numbers will go away. So these are just the raw numbers as you see them currently now. Are there no major items in expenses that I need to bring to your attention? If you have any questions on the financial statements as a whole, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Beckles, we unfortunately missed our little finance project during our retreat because of time and other items, but just a couple of very simple questions. On the, on page two, on top of page three, when we talk about encumbrances, can you just define for me what those are? Help me understand that. And the other question is, on the bottom of page two, we sort of have an annual summary, it looks like, from last academic year of incomes from other areas like prior encumbrances and insurance proceeds and the health insurance reserve. Is that something that is then reported quarterly for the, for the next year, or is that done annually?
No, that was one of the audit adjustments I'm saying that have not been booked. Once we book those, you will see them over on the eighteen side, so you'll see the effect of those for eighteen.
So that'd be next time, or?
The next, maybe not, September. It'll be the October one or the November one, you'll see, when we close out, you'll see those adjustments on the other side. They will be the prior year transactions that affect the current year.
Uh-huh, okay.
Now, you said on the bottom of page two...
Just the definition of encumbrances.
Okay. An encumbrance is, well, let me go back to the sheet. You'll see the budget, you see transactions, encumbrance, and your available balance. The transactions are those that be items that we have already spent. The encumbrance is a reserve of the budget that we haven't actually spent yet, but it's anticipated to spend. So if you take your original budget, minus what you've spent, minus what we propose to spend, or we have commitments out there for, and normally that's in the form of a purchase order, we're saying we have committed a commitment to spend X amount of dollars. So our original budget, minus our expenditure, minus our encumbrances, gives you what's available, money that you can still spend. Now, if our expenditure or encumbrances together are greater than our budget, you're going to see the available balance being a negative number. In fact, you're going to see some of those that I've said to you now have a negative number, because they have encumbrances... number because they have encumbrances in them that affect from the prior year that hasn't been turned over yet. So an encumbrance is a committed, a set of funds that have been committed for expenditure.
But not yet paid.
But not yet, not yet have been incurred. It's supposed to...
Right.
Once we pay it, that releases from the encumbrance and goes over into the transaction amount, the pay to column.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Beckles, you explain things so well. That's all I want to say.
Well, thank you, sir.
Well, I appreciate your diligence and attention to detail, coming from the engineering background where if you miss a bolt and your bridge falls down, details matter.
There's no point in doing it. Zero does matter.
This is a big budget, and there's not a lot of margin in it. It's very tight. It looks $100 million, and it's like a lot of money, but when you come down to the end of the year and you're less than, you know, $1 million, that's less than 1%, and that takes a lot of attention. I wouldn't necessarily say control, but it takes control, but it takes attention and discipline, so.
Yeah, our 348...
I wanted to say a thank you and appreciate it.
Thousand-dollar fund balances is a little bit...
As well as your team.
Too close to the neck or the haircut.
Yeah.
It's a little bit too, too tight. As far as the school nutrition update, all of the applications are currently in, and any student that demonstrated a need has been taken care of, so we have no standing issues as far as the students are concerned as that comes. All new applications are processed the same day, so there's no lag behind an application coming in today. That student is set right in the system from today, and there's no issue there. Our meal participation by our students is still trending up, and at this point, we are ahead of where we are in participation from last year. So those are three good things that are still happening with this school nutrition. The one point that we are still having difficulty on, we still having difficulty finding qualified workers to work in school nutrition. That is a daily challenge that we have, because currently we still don't have any subs. So, and we are very thin on moving people back and forth, so we are still having a problem hiring qualified individuals to work in our school nutrition program. If that problem continues, it ultimately is going to have a negative effect on the quality of the food that we can produce and the service that we can provide. I just want to bring to your attention that we're still having difficulty in that area. Alio, our new finance and HR system. The finance module has been installed. We're up and running live now. We're still working on some of the kinks, but I want to say a special thanks to David Chilvers and the IT team, Kim Lukanich and the finance team, and then Wyden Hammer with their team. They put in some long hours to make sure all of the bugs will work down. So so far, the system is working as expected. Phase one has been completed. Phase two is the implementation of the HR and the payroll modules. I do expect that to be a little bit more difficult because just of the nature, payroll by itself is just a complicated matter, but so far, the implementation and everything is working fine. We have a second set of training for those that missed the first set, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, so everybody, all those that missed it can catch it this coming week. But so far, the new system is up and running and working fine.
Thank you. Any other board questions or comments? Sure, Dr. Coleman?
I think that your report around the nutrition piece shows the effectiveness of the board working with the superintendent and the efficiencies to resolve a matter that had been presented to us, and based on what I'm hearing, that matter has completely been resolved other than we now working on how to get some folk in there, in the area that he just mentioned, and that is a beautiful thing.
Thanks, sir.
Awesome. Very good.
May I say that Ms. Beth Morris has been really great about working with that and...
Excellent.
And with Mr. Beckles' staff. They've done a great job.
Just one note, a reminder that the finance committee is going to meet this Thursday at 12 o'clock.
Okay. Moving now to the consent agenda. It consists of the school board meeting minutes for October 11, the special meeting; October 17, the regular meeting; October 19, the Student Discipline Committee meeting; a Personnel Report and Addendum. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Send it. Send it second.
Okay, thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. Passes. Thank you. Brings us to Student Representative Comments. I think, Mr. Shaw, you missed last time, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, take it away.
Hey, everybody. So here's what's been going on. Every Friday, we, Heritage sets up Pioneer Power for, to recognize students on, in their behavior or in academics. And every end of the nine weeks, we do a drawing in each grade, and one of the bigger prizes was it beats headphones, and student Joseph Seekings won that for his good attendance record and academic progress. FAFSA night occurred a few weeks ago. Many of our students have completed their first steps in applying to college. And a big thanks for, to Beacon of Hope, for the FAFSA night. In the community, the Heritage High School Culinary Arts and Construction Trades Classes partnered up with Habitat for Humanity, and they helped build a home for a family. And the culinary arts teacher, John Garrettson, he says that this is a simple way to get them out there, make that connection, and learn new skills and make an impact. And many of these pictures were taken from the news in advance, and it is a good thing that students are coming out and helping the community. The National Honor Society, many of the members dressed up as book characters and volunteered at Givens Books a couple of weeks ago. For theater, as many of you may have heard, we received first place at the Virginia Theater Association for their play, Second Samuel, and they'll be participating in the Southeastern Theater Conference in March. Harris Erickson, he was the, one of the main characters. He won Best Performer. Hattie Bell received the All-Star Award, and Ellie Matthews received third in set design. He also received first in district competitions this Saturday, and Harrison, Harris also won Best Actor. They're also doing a fundraiser to raise money for transportation because their next conference is in Alabama, so they do need funding for that. And you can find that on the Heritage High School Facebook page, their fundraiser site. The Heritage High School MC, GR OTC Drill Team, won first place overall this weekend at the drill competition, and these are, they won first place in platoon drill, individual armed, and inspection. On the sports front, Heritage Cross Country participated in the regional competition, and they had a good season, but Luke Richards, he qualified to compete in the state championship. The JV football team had an undefeated season this year, and the varsity football team became Seminole District champs after defeating Jefferson Forest 42 to 38. Their first playoffs is on November 9 against Liberty at the City Stadium. These are some of the pictures regarding football games. We also had Spirit Week a few weeks ago. The senior class dressed up as 101 Dal, Dal, Dalmatians, sorry, and the spirit days were shown there. It was very fun. Mr. Beatty, he also dressed up as a Star Wars character on movie day. I would have gotten a picture, but, but Mr. Beatty didn't send me one, so. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to... Welcome, Ms. Boroskis.
Sorry.
Jump right in.
Obviously, this is my first time. I'd like to formally introduce myself. My name's Ava Boroskis. I am a senior at EC Glass High School this year, and I just finished my final season of volleyball, so I'm done and now committing all my time to this and the EC Glass home team. So, this past Friday, we had a wonderful football game. Unfortunately, EC Glass came out with a loss and fell short to the Amherst County Lancers. Final score, 21 to 28. Wanted to notice that picture because it was our EC Glass Senior Night. The band, the cheerleaders, and the football members were recognized for their senior year and the commitment that they put towards these teams and clubs. And that is little Kennedy Robertson. She is my alternate who's usually here, so I wanted to point her out with her parents as she walked down the field for her senior night. And so our football team will be continuing playoffs this Friday, November 10, facing William Byrd. Today was touching bases for EC Glass High School. I think it's one of the great opportunities for parents to visit with teachers and have a real personal connection within a parent-teacher relationship. The first one Monday was from 4:00 to 6:00 at EC Glass in the auxiliary gym, and today, during Election Day, they were held at EC Glass from 8:00 to 10:00, but unfortunately, but fortunately, our students were not there due to Election Day. A fundraiser that is going on within EC Glass, we are collecting Coca-Cola bottle tops and box tabs, which is a great way that Coca-Cola gives EC Glass 10 cents for every bottle cap that is returned to the Coca-Cola Corporation. And so I think that would be a great way to raise money within our school, and we could somehow come up with an idea or a way to put this money towards our school. And this was our Hilltopper of the Week. This is Ms. Karen Barra. I hope that's how you pronounce her name. She is one of the ecology teachers at EC Glass High School, and she was nominated because she provides so much for her students and loves and nurtures her most challenging groups of students, equally, if not significantly more, than her easiest groups of students, which is a very outstanding sort of line that I've never really acknowledged. And she is a great differenti, differentiation and works to strengths of her students. So those are just a couple highlights from EC Glass that we've had within the last week, and I hope to see you all next week.
Okay, very good.
Or when our next meeting is.
Thank you.
December.
All right. Okay, so that brings us to School Board Committee Reports. I don't know if there are any.
We meet tomorrow.
Thursday. Okay. Okay. We can move now to unfinished business. First is the School Board Governance, Norms, and Protocols. These were developed, I shouldn't say developed, they were worked on when we had our Board Governance Training up at the V S B A. Made some minor changes. I don't think there's been any other comments that I'm aware of, and any other suggestions from, from board members. So basically, this is how we agree we're going to interact with each other and, you know, work with the superintendent. Basically, it's to focus on board policy and governance. So if there's no, no other comments, this is for action tonight. Is there a motion to approve the School Board Governance, Norms, and Protocols as presented?
I move that the School Board approves the School Board Governance, Systems Protocols. That's outlined. Second.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Okay. If not, we, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. It brings us to G2, Unfinished Business. School Board Dates, Meeting Times, and Locations for 2017-18. Annually, the Board establishes meeting dates, times, and locations for regular school board meetings. On July 11, 2017, the Board established the first and third Tuesday of each month, beginning at 5:30 here in the boardroom in the school administration building, with the exception of April 3, 2018, as its meeting schedule for the 2017-18 school year. During the school board retreat, one of the topics for discussion was to change the meeting schedule to one meeting per month. School Board agreed through consensus to this change. Further, the Board also agreed to meet on January 16, 2018, rather than January 2, 2018. So this is for action tonight to, I guess, officially approve what was kind of a general sense of something that we wished to do. Is there, I guess, open it up for discussion? I guess I would say that certainly in, in the budget season, I don't know, February, March, maybe January, February, March, committing on input with, from administration, there likely would be work session established on the, probably the third Tuesday. And that as a consequence of meeting once a month, board meetings will be longer, but the advantage is, I think, for administration not having to prepare for, for a meeting every other week. Lets them do more schoolwork more efficiently, so. Ms. Morrison?
I've given this a lot of thought this weekend, and as I said at the school board retreat, that we are often given information at a board meeting that needs to be approved within the next two weeks, and I hope that... And the reply was that we could always call a school board meeting, but it only takes five, and I don't want that to become the norm for us. I think if we, if we need to have additional meetings, then we need to keep on our calendars. That, that's a commitment for Thursday, the third Thursday, third Tuesday of the month, that that could be a workshop or a, or a called meeting for... I don't want us to miss, I don't want us to go back to being a five-member board instead of a full board, is what I'm saying. Also, you know, we already have a workshop or a closed meeting for the next school board meeting for personnel. We normally don't meet in December but once, and we've already moved the January one to the third Tuesday, and then we have workshops for budget and calendars coming up. So we are still going to be busy, and we are still going to be having those meetings during, on the third Tuesday, based on the, what we've been given. I just don't want us... I just want, I want to make sure that we have the time to do what we need to do, and I also, I don't, four or five-hour meetings are rather long at the end of a school day, of a workday for everyone, and also for people who work a regular job on the board, and I just hope that we can work better at getting the information and making it more concise.
Thank you. Yeah. Dr. Brennan?
I'd just also like to mention that I totally understand and respect the, the work that goes into preparing for the school board meetings, particularly by the administration and by Wendy Sullivan and by the superintendent, and I understand that that's an important issue, and I certainly think that Dr. Massey, who has, I think, one of his mottos, of many mottos, is to meet, to meet less and work more. If he would stay for another 10 years, I'd love to follow that motto, and we could keep his leadership. But as, as a new member of the Board, I have a little concern, and then I'm, I'm pretty impressed by how much material we, we need to review for meetings that we have currently. And when we do have a meeting, we currently have the time to be able to discuss things that lay into, I think, comfortably, not feel pressed by time, that we can actually discuss items to, through to where we want to lead them. So I think the idea of going to one meeting, which has already been said, I think will be longer meetings, I think will be a little diff, more difficult to manage the time is one issue. The other is that, as I also mentioned at the retreat, I've looked at the 15-15 school, city districts that we compare ourselves to, and other parameters, I've looked at all of them this time. And of the 17 city school districts that are on there, 11 of them have two meetings a month, only six of them just have one a month. Of those six, five of them are significantly smaller than we are. Their, their average daily membership is 4,300 or less. Their average daily membership is 4,300 or less. There's only one, which is Newport News, which is higher than that. And then lastly, as has been said, I think we're going into a pretty busy time. We're looking to hire a new superintendent by the end of the year. We're going to have meetings related to that. We're going to have budget meetings in January and February. I think this would be something, obviously, we would want to do after those sessions. And as we hire a new superintendent, I'm also thinking about the fact that because of FOIA regulations, the way we're restricted, that really our meetings are our ability to come together as a group to actually interact with the superintendent, and for us to understand where he's coming from, and he can understand where we're coming from. And I kind of have some reservations about losing that with our new superintendent. And if indeed we are going to be having meetings coming in the future that are going to be, you know, that we need to have, do we need to make this decision now, or should we wait for our new superintendent to participate in that decision so he can understand which way he would like to work with the School Board? I'll close by saying that I'm obviously a new member of the Board. We are, I understand, a young Board. I've talked to two previous chairpersons of the Board. I've talked to a respected member of the Board who was a retired school teacher, who will not have to be named, who also felt that maybe this is a pretty big decision, and it might be courteous and appropriate to wait for the new superintendent to make that decision. So I would just ask that we at least consider that of postponing this and making the decision at the time we have our new superintendent. Thank you.
Dr. Senna.
Just to echo what they said, I've had similar concerns. I mean, personally, I would really like to have just one meeting a month. So, it almost pains me to say it, to keep the two meetings a month. And I really understand the toll it takes on staff to put things together. So, I, yeah, I would want to make sure that we keep that second Tuesday dedicated on our calendar, so that if there are things that come up, that with the proper notice, we can have our, a public meeting. I like that going to once-a-month meeting allows us more flexibility with that second Tuesday for work sessions, which with the coming budget and calendar and such, I'm assuming we would be doing anyway. So, but I, you know, as I thought about it more, I thought, you know, the new superintendent might want to say this, and we just have these big issues coming up. Maybe, maybe now's not the time to cut back, and maybe we delay till March or something after the big decisions have been made. I don't know.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Polly?
Well, I guess I'm just going to sound like the hopeless optimistic in the room, but I really feel like the decision, hopefully, can provide some relief from what Dr. Massey was commenting on, on some of the labor-intensive things that go behind putting together a School Board. So, I'm very aware of everyone's concern, but I just, I think the productivity, hopefully, will be able to offset some of our concern. And I understand wanting to include the new superintendent. I didn't think about that aspect, so I appreciate the Board members bringing that part up, but I do want to express my optimism that hopefully the switch, the relief from some of the background work that goes into it can produce some benefits, some mutual benefits for the Board and for the staff.
Ms. Morrison.
And it's my understanding that we can always revisit this issue. If we decide to do this, then we can always say, "This is not working for us." Am I correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just want to make sure.
Ms. Carter?
Well, I think this is a great opportunity for us to see how this will work, and we have the opportunity to make the change. And just because we're having one meeting doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be longer. We can look at the presentations, scale down those PowerPoints, the scaled-down material, not to delete things we need, but to make sure everything's presented in a clear, concise manner. And if we do our research and our work beforehand, we should be ready and prepared to do whatever we need to do to make that work. And then also, if we have a lot of questions, then it means that we may not be able to act on that item, and so therefore to have everything that comes ready so that we can present. But, and this may be the best time, since we don't have a superintendent, so, I mean, a new one in place, that we can try now with the seasoned superintendent and see how that works.
Ms. Mason?
I'm embarrassed to say that I really hadn't stopped to think about the time that it took administration to prepare for the meetings. I mean, I know they do a lot of work, but when you realize that it takes half the month, you know, a week to prepare, a week to recover, I am in favor of switching to the once monthly. I think we all recognize that we need to keep that second date available, and recognize during this season with hiring and budget and schedules, that we may not see a once-a-month for quite some time. But if our seasoned superintendent, Dr. Massey, you know, thinks that that is wise and brought it to our attention, I think, I'm like Mr. Polly, I'm very optimistic that it might be a good idea.
Mr. Coleman?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to go back to the work session piece that I have been trying to indicate, which I think would then be the second meeting, whenever we would have it. That work sessions of the Board are held to examine subjects in greater depth than is possible during business meetings. And so, some things are better suited for work sessions. And because of our poverty and achievement gap issues and other types of things, I certainly hope that the spirit of the Board would be that there would be more than likely times where we would have that second meeting, and it wouldn't just be for the purpose of having a meeting, to have a meeting, but it would be for us to make sure that that business meeting remains a business meeting, and where necessary, work sessions could accomplish the depth that we need to make appropriate decisions. For that reason, that I support the motion as it is presented.
Other? Ms. Snyder?
Yes, Dr. Cole, we kind of jumped in with what I was going to say, but I've always found in the past, sitting on the Board, that our work sessions have been extremely productive. We've been able to talk and get to the meat and bones of things, and have staff there, not necessarily having to prepare anything, but there to answer our questions and to really give us the knowledge that we need to make the decisions, that when we go into the Board, or the business meetings, that we're ready to tackle the issues. There have been times in the past where we've had to sit through three, four, five business meetings, asking a couple questions here and there because of the length of time, constrictions that we have, where things have rolled out longer than they probably needed to, that we could have, if we had a work session, just tackled it, asked all of our questions, and moved on. So, I feel like we're a smart Board. We'll be able to realize quickly if things aren't working for us, and if we need to switch back. And of course, if anybody had any of those concerns, always take them to, you know, the Chair as soon as you would have those concerns. But I feel good about this, and Dr. Massey's recommendation, feel like we can make this work.
Dr. Brennan?
And I certainly appreciate all the comments that will go along with the consensus of the Board. Is the conversation, though, that there should be a work, that there should be two dates, one being a work date that can be used or not, or is that a flexible date? Because the current, I think the current proposal is it's once a month without a work session involved.
I would say generally, the work dates are flexible. Certainly in the spring with the budget season, calendar, and all that, there are usually work sessions that are scheduled regardless. So you can pretty much plan on the third Tuesday in February and March, and, I don't know, maybe January and April this year. I mean, the Lynchburg school budget cycle tends to run longer because of the need to get numbers into City Council, and then having to deal with, you know, the state and all that. So, you know, the reality is, we can call a meeting when we need to. The work sessions in general are more informal. You know, the presentations don't, you don't have to have the big formal presentation. It's a little easier for staff, I think, to support. I mean, you can certainly rebut that if that's not the case. I mean, I'm in favor of going to one meeting a month. You know, these are our meetings. You know, my experience in the work world is the presentations can, will expand to fill the available time. And if they, if they run over, then we need to give feedback to administration that presentations need to be tightened up. I mean, these are our meetings. And I think because there's likely to be more materials that we need to review, I would hope the Board packet could get out a couple days earlier to facilitate that. So, that's where I'm standing in this. Oh, one other anecdotal comment. When we were doing the initial searching for interim replacement and contacting some candidates, there was one candidate that was not returning a call for a couple of days, which I found very odd, and then found out that that superintendent, who was retiring, was going to become available, was getting ready for the Board meeting, and was not returning, you know, so I'm just, that's, that's kind of a little bit, that's a sign. So, I just, Dr. Coleman?
I just want to say to Dr. Brennan and everyone around the table, but I'm speaking to Dr. Brennan, it's just so encouraging to me to see Board members do the kind of behind-the-scenes research, to look at things and to bring things to our attention that can help us to make better decisions. And I want you to know that we certainly appreciate how diligent you are in looking at the whole picture, and it only helps as each of us as Board members engage in that, and then we can make the best decision. And the good news out of all of this is that if we need to change, we can go back and revisit it.
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, this is, this is up to us. This is our decision what we want to do. So if it doesn't work, we change it. And my guess is it'll be pretty obvious if it doesn't work, so. I guess I would like to, can we schedule work sessions in February and March? Does that seem appropriate for budget and calendar discussions? So that would be the third Tuesday. We could schedule that. And then, I guess, through the rest of this school year, plan on the first Tuesday of each month at 5:30, with the exception of January 2nd. So that meeting would be the 16th. And then April 3rd, because of break, we would have a meeting on the 17th, April 17th.
I totally agree. Mr. Chair, alongside of that, but it might be off the point, but you can get us back. We just approved our protocol. Within that protocol, I assume that it addresses if a Board member felt that there was a need for a work session beyond what we've already scheduled, what would be the procedure for work sessions on the other months that we don't automatically say we want to have one?
I don't think there's, there's a protocol for putting items on the agenda. There's not a protocol for an individual Board member to call a meeting.
That might be something we want to come back later.
That would be have to something that the Board would have to address, you know, individually, if there was urgent need. So I guess there's, can we, I guess, have a motion to establish the first Tuesday of each month? For monthly, let me read the whole thing, so we're legit here. So, we establish the first Tuesday of each month at 5:30 in the boardroom for a regular business meeting, with the exception of January 2nd and April 3rd. Those business meetings will be on January 16th and April 17th, with work sessions scheduled for, I guess we should get the dates right?
Do we need to be specific about the work sessions?
February 20th, which is the third Tuesday, and March 20th for work sessions. And that just gets it on the calendar, so we don't have to announce it.
And if we have additional ones, we'll figure out what the process is.
If we have additional ones, then we treat it as a called meeting, and we're not limited just to that. It just kind of gets it on everybody's calendar. So is there a motion to, make a motion for this?
Yes, I'm moving to make the motion. I forgot what I was saying.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? I guess my only comment is, is, you know, like I said, this is our schedule, and we can change it either way. So, okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. Okay, well, now we move to new business, the Special Education Advisory Committee for 2017-18. Right now, this is planned for information tonight, with action at our next meeting, which is going to be committed on other things. And plus, I think they're planning on having a meeting, and so the request is actually as we approve this this evening. Dr. McLean?
I'll turn it over to Mr. Vanderwoerke.
Mr. Vanderwoerke?
Back to you, all Board members. Yes. And as you can see from the scheduled meetings, we have been working with our anticipated Advisory Committee members and wanted to try to get a meeting in November, because typically, this group of very active moms and dads of students with disabilities like to ask for a planning meeting with the superintendent. So we wanted to get that going prior to your budget session. So I know it's a little awkward, but if you wouldn't mind considering approving the committee this evening, instead of waiting, it would help us move ahead with the meetings. Very excited about this committee. The principals really worked hard getting the word out and recruiting new Advisory Committee members, because we had over half that their terms expired, so we're looking forward to another outstanding year.
Would you mind just kind of give a brief overview of what the committee does, and just kind of, just general background? I mean?
Sure, be glad to. You just have to remember, Dr. Nils, to cut me off, because I'll get rolling. The Special Education Advisory Committee is in-
Set the timer.
Right, right. Mr. Beckles, okay. The Special Education Advisory Committee is one of your Code of Virginia Required Committees. There must be one member on the Advisory Committee who's a special education teacher, and we do have a new colleague who's going to help with that, Elaine Gaston, from Lincoln Elementary, served for a few years. And we advise, we, I shouldn't say we, they advise the School Board on unmet needs of students with disabilities. That is their Code of Virginia requirement to report to you on unmet needs for children in our city. They, their practice is to meet with the superintendent, to give him or her their recommendations, and then with the understanding that the superintendent would just, would follow protocol and then move on and bring that information to the Board. As a note for our community members who might be listening, the Advisory Committee has a historical practice of any family member, any parents who come to the public sessions, that they're more than welcome, okay? And so far, the number of people that participate has not been cumbersome, so our chairs throughout the years continue to work hard to try to involve them. So, very, very energetic committee, and I could go into lists upon lists of changes in special education in this community that are directly related to work of the Advisory Committee. A prime example for you that's most recent is your very successful, after one year, project search program with Centra. That came out of your Advisory Committee advocating and working with you all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there Board member questions or comments? No? Okay, so, obviously, you've been working hard in the agenda packet first came out. There were a number of TBDs in here, and I see they're all filled in, so.
Yes, the principals really worked hard, and I appreciate it.
That's great. So, they're asking for approval this evening. What's the Board's pleasure?
I move that the Board approve the membership for the Special Education Advisory Committee for 2017-2028.
Is there any additional discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No.
Thank you.
Go for it. Go forth, thank you. That brings us to new business, H2, Virginia Tiered Systems of Support Grant Cohort. Cohort Four Implementation Phase, 2017-18 school year. Mr. Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. In June, we applied to the State Department of Education to be included in the Virginia Tiered System of Supports. As you can tell by Cohort Four, we are the fourth group to be brought in at the implementation phase. Part of that implementation phase is a $25,000 grant to help with the initial trainings and stand-up of the program. The details of how we have that money, how we anticipate allocating that money is on the second page of this agenda item. So we have already begun work in this area. We actually began with PBIS several years ago. But now we have lots, lots more support from the Department of Education and folks that are helping us get these things going. Our two pilot schools for this year are EC Glass and Lincoln Middle School. So this is just making you aware of the additional grants, monies. Mr. Beckles, grant managers will be handling the financial disbursements for that, and we just needed to get it to the board so you were aware of it.
Okay. All right. Other questions or comments? Is there a willingness to put this on the consent agenda for the next meeting? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item I, superintendent's comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And first of all, thank you for your kind consideration and support of my recommendation for monthly school board meetings. I think you're going to like that very much. On Thursday, November 9th, at 6:00 PM, in the Dunbar Middle School for Innovation Auditorium, Shawn Hester and the Ann Spencer Museum will host a 26th Annual Ann Spencer Poetry Contest Ceremony. Finalists will perform their poetry and winners will be announced at this ceremony. We're very fortunate to have such a rich history in Lynchburg, including the Ann Spencer House and Garden, which provides a memorial and record of the lives Ann Spencer touched. We're likewise fortunate to have Ann's granddaughter, Shawn, who works so closely in partnership with our school system to continue to sponsor this annual opportunity for our K-12 students, as well as make the Ann Spencer House and Garden available to our students and community. We encourage everyone to attend this ceremony on November 9th at 6:00 PM. Just a reminder, the joint meeting with city council and the school board is December 7th, 5:30 to 7:30. They still haven't determined the site of that. We'll let you know as soon as we find out when that, when that is. Finally, as I sent to you today, at the meeting on August 15th, 2017, the Lynchburg City School Board determined that policy IICB-R/IIICC-R, Community Resource Personnel/School Volunteers, be reconsidered in 90 days. In view of the fact that there's been no changes in the circumstances of this matter, I recommend that the policy remain in place unchanged. And if you agree, then there'll be no need to vote, since there's no changes to be made to the policy. That's all I have, sir.
Board member, questions or comments? Anything on the volunteer policy? I know we had additional meeting and, Dr. Brennan?
I would just like to make a comment because this has been such a big issue for the board and for the community. And as a member of the school board, I certainly want to, I certainly totally support the decision by the board to continue the same policy based on the concerns about the liability insurance and how that would put at risk the school system. I also want to thank the many community members and the people who have come to these meetings and spoke at our public part, supporting this, understanding that we were not by any means trying to make the schools unsafe, but we were trying to find mentors and volunteers in our community who clearly have the talent and the ability to add to our students' success. And I want to thank this board for taking this topic on the way that you did. It was really impressive how it was discussed so thoroughly and so appropriately and how it was supported by this board. So thank you all for doing that on the basis of, from the community and from the Equity Task Force that worked on this. Thank you very much.
Ms. Mason.
I just wanted to say, I know that there are many people that are disappointed with the outcome of the changes in the volunteer policy. And I want to reiterate, though, that, you know, you are still able to participate in activities with your child. Maybe not in a volunteer capacity, but any event that your child is participating in, it's my understanding, unless it's a field trip, you can participate. And I think we just need to keep getting that message out stronger because it saddens me to hear parents say, I couldn't go to an event that my child was at because I'm a felon. And I think there's a lot of misinformation still surrounding that.
No, I guess I'd like to echo that, too. It's, the parents are able, welcome and encouraged to participate in with their kids in their classroom, with the, in classroom activities. You know, the issue is, you know, volunteering on a field trip or something, that it's unfortunate, but that's the, that's the situation. Basically a legal situation.
Ms. Snyder.
I hope that we are reaching out and letting our teachers know exactly what parents are allowed to do in the classrooms and with their children because a lot of times, the people who might be volunteering, their only contacts in the schools are the teachers with their kids. So I would hope that the teachers are ready and prepped with, you know, this is how you can help, this is how you can be a part of the child, and, you know, whether it's a form, here you go. I remember one of the presentations listed exactly what you can do in the schools. So I'm hoping that everybody's ready and prepared to answer those questions and, you know, spread the word in the schools and out of the schools, too.
Okay, all right, thank you. As an informational item, the next school board meeting is going to be Tuesday, November 21st, at 5:00 PM here in the boardroom, the school administration building. It will be a closed meeting involving personnel matters? Okay. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.